I just feel like with it comes to the minutes is good to have a quick, just a short summary for any special presentations. And with the flood barrier description, if we could just add just a little bit more. So if someone comes back, let's say in a couple of years and none of us are here, they just have a better sense of what the project is about. And I can help give you verbiage there if you need it. But I just think we need a summary of what exactly the pilot project is and the cost. Because the council did vote to approve that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is the council in agreement with that edit or do you think it's unnecessary? I'm open either way. I just feel like if someone comes back or residents, they want to have some more information.
Mayor James, I, I, I do think that that is beneficial for the future because we are making a fiscal investment in that. But I would like to see the addition before approving it. So I just request respectfully if we could just table the voting of these work session minutes.
All right, so I believe the motion was made by Councilmember Blunt to approve the minutes. Councilmember, do you want to withdraw your motion and then we'll just table it until the July meeting? Okay. So the motion is withdrawn. The next set of minutes for tonight's approval are the May eighth work session minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Moved by Councilmember Rout. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember McBride. Any amendments, corrections, or additions? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of aye. Aye. Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. And now we're getting into the budget minutes. Yay, Mr. Tenelli. So we'll begin with the April seventeenth budget work session minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Moved by Councilmember Rout. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Blunt. Any amendments or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of aye. Aye. Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. We'll move forward to the Monday, April twenty-fourth budget work session minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Moved by Councilmember McBride. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Rout. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of aye. Aye. Any nays? The ayes have it. And coming down on the last one, is there a motion to approve the Monday, May first, twenty-twenty-three budget work session minutes?
That's a move.
Moved by Councilmember Blunt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Rout. Any amendments or corrections? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of aye. Aye. Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. Again, thank you for your patience. We had several budget work session meetings as we traditionally do. Got a little backed up on the production of the minutes, just trying to ensure all the details were in them. Everything will be posted to the town's website following the meeting if it hasn't been posted already. At this time, we're very pleased to have with us the team that is working on the Hamlet Woods development, which is in Ward Two. And so at this time to kick, excuse me, kick things off for the presentation, we'd like to turn it over to Joe Clark from Osprey Development Company to introduce the team and begin the presentation.
Point of information, Mayor James, there's a comment in the sec, in the chat that states that they cannot hear anything online.
Okay, thank you for that. So, Mr. Gray, if you can hear us, if you could just help with troubleshooting on the Zoom link, that would be great. And the meeting is being recorded, so for anyone who does miss it, at least they can go back and watch it in its entirety on our social media channels as well as, which includes YouTube. Thank you. Over to you, Mr. Clark.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here with Mayor James, the Town Council, Rich, who I've met before, and other members of the town community. We're here to discuss the towns at Hamlet Woods, which is a fifty-nine unit affordable housing project located on the north side of Fifty-seventh Avenue, which is located just to the southeast of Templeton Elementary School. My name is Joe Clark. I'm the Vice President of Development at Osprey Property Company. And with me you have Howard Urban at Parallax Development Group and Brian Lopez with Osprey as well. We're the co-developers for the project. We go to the next slide. So just a brief introduction to Osprey Property Company. We've been doing affordable housing in Maryland. Residents is Springbrook. That's a ninety-unit senior project. And then the rest of the development team for reference. Studio K is the architect. Plano Coudon is a general contractor and Habitat America is the property manager. They all have extensive experience with affordable housing in Maryland. Osprey has worked with Studio K on two recent projects, which you can see in that pamphlet. You'll see Twenty-two Light Street, which was a renovation of a Baltimore city office space into multifamily. So that'll give you an understanding of the quality of work we've done before with Studio K. Plano and Habitat both have extensive experience with Maryland affordable projects as well. We've been working with Habitat for the past twenty years, have a very good relationship with them, which helps when we finish construction and turn it over to operations. We know exactly what Habitat is looking for and they know exactly what we're looking for, which makes that transition seamless. A little more information on the project. This map is not zoomed in quite as much as it should be, but again, it's located at the end of Fifty-seventh Avenue, just southeast of Templeton Elementary. Again, fifty-nine total units. It's all spacious three and four-bedroom style units. They're, they're, it's a mixture of townhomes and two-over-twos, which means two floors over two floors. That's where we have the three-bedroom units. And then the single townhomes, which are just two floors, are the four-bedroom units. Again, it's professionally managed by Habitat America. They'll be there all the time while we're leasing up. And then a couple of times a week, once it's reached a hundred percent occupied. Additionally, we have twenty-four-seven maintenance throughout the entire project. Again, located at the end of Fifty-seventh Avenue, extremely close to the proposed Riverdale Park and Kennerworth Purple Line Station, and very close to major thoroughfares, as I'm sure you're familiar with, Two-Ninety-five just to the east and Four-Fifty just to the north. Additionally, there is a ton of bus routes that are within walking distance. Line T eighteen and, and the bus route eighteen are both within a half mile of the site. And then you have a plentiful amount of retailers as well as large, large employers in, in the market area. Additionally, we also wanted to note, we provide tenant services on all of our projects with the goal of improving the quality of life of our residents and the self-sufficiency. This is a family project, so a lot of those tenant services will be geared towards families, thinking after-school programs, financial literacy, things of that nature. Next slide. Here you'll just see a site plan and some renderings of the project. So on the right-hand side there, that is a rendering of the two-over-two. So you have the first floor and basement unit. That's, that's one unit. And then the second floor and third floors is the other three-bedroom unit. These are built with the grade of the property, so those basement levels house all the bath, sorry, bedrooms for the three-bedroom unit, but you'll have large windows on the backside there. So you start getting a lot of natural light into those units. And I don't know if you can see on the site plan, but those two-over-two styles are in buildings B, C, and D, which are kind of in the middle of the property. And we are also looking to make all of those entrances visitable, which means a, a flat entrance for people that are disabled or become temporarily disabled. Building A and Building E, which is the topmost building and the southernmost building in that site plan, those are all the four-bedroom townhouse-style units. Again, those are just two floors, their own individual units. And we have one accessible unit in Building A, and we are attempting to, to get that pathway flat as well. It may be a little difficult given the current grade of the property, but that is the goal. Next slide. This is an example of a prior project from Osprey Property Company. So this is a sixty-one unit townhouse project, rental, rental housing as well. All three and four-bedroom units. It's in Baltimore County, Maryland. And it was a just over twenty million dollar project. So as you can see, we like to have open floor plans, high-end finishes, and spacious units with lots of natural light. You can see in the bottom right there, we've got large closet space in the bedrooms as well. This is our typical standard finish package, which we think is of much higher quality than, than what you typically see on the market. Next slide, please. This is an example of a two-over-two and townhouse-style product that Studio K has done in Howard County, Maryland. Again, Studio K is the architect, so as you can see from, from this, it's very high-end exterior. It's a little more modern than what we are looking to do at, at Hamlet Woods because we want to match the surrounding neighborhood. But as you can see, spacious, open floor plan with a large kitchen and some high-end finishes. Here's a little more information on the units. So again, spacious three and four bedrooms. They all have Energy Star appliances in the kitchen, which helps keep energy costs down for residents and, and keeps up with current energy codes. They'll be cable-ready, large closets, as well as large windows with window coverings. And then again, I, we think it's higher-end finishes than what you're going to find in, in existing affordable housing in the market. The unit mix there, you'll see it's all three and four-bedroom units, targeted at area median income units of fifty and sixty percent. We have sixteen four-bedroom units and forty-three three-bedroom units. And the rents range from seventeen hundred to two thousand and seventy for the four-bedroom units. Here is just the sources and uses for the project. As, as I mentioned, it's about a little over twenty million dollars in, in construction costs. And this just kind of breaks down the, the total development cost of which exceeds twenty-nine million. Next slide. Compliance with CB fifty-one twenty-two. So we are pursuing funds in how, in the form of Housing Investment Trust funds from Prince George's County, which requires us to meet CB fifty-one twenty-two, which will require us to meet a specific standard and percentage of construction costs associated to Prince George's County-based small businesses and MBEs. All of our Maryland affordable housing projects have to meet twenty-nine, twenty-nine percent minimum threshold for MBE participation. We've never had an issue meeting that threshold. We always try to exceed it and typically do. So we don't foresee any issues with, with attracting Prince George's County small businesses on this project. And that concludes the, the PowerPoint. Another item that I think we had briefly talked about with, with Rich and Mayor James was the concept of a pilot. So that's a payment in lieu of taxes. So on this project, we will be forced to pay taxes on, at the Prince George's County level, as well as the town of Bladensburg level, which is, it, it makes the net operating income for the project a little lower than what we anticipate typically. So a pilot is basically a per-unit credit per year. And we just, we wanted to throw that out there to you guys and, and discuss that to see if, if that's a possibility at the county level. And we can discuss numbers and go into more detail on that if, if you don't have any other questions that you wanted to, to address prior.
Thank you for walking us through the presentation and for also providing it in advance so we could take a look. I appreciate you also coming back to present this to the full council. Somebody's speakers are on. One thing that I did ask before and just want to raise it again was whether or not you would be amenable to working with the town to have a stock of units set aside for any folks who the county deems as in transition. So for individuals who are coming out of homelessness, regaining employment, and needing that first step into becoming housing secure, if that would be something that you would be open to establishing as your criteria or the allocation of units?
And I'll let, I'll let Brian chime in on this in a little more detail, but.
I don't know that we can have a specific set aside, but we have, in the past, we have worked with Baltimore County to provide permanent supportive housing. They usually provide voucher holders to us, and so it becomes, the residents don't know who's in what unit. It's simply, we provide two units and they keep them occupied with people. We'd have to discuss how that works with this program specifically, but we have done that in the past with other projects.
Thank you for that. That's helpful to know. And then with respect to your question about some sort of credit per unit, can you help us understand, because in this situation, you do, as you said, pay taxes to the town in addition to Prince George's County. So would the credit be split that you're requesting, say, a percentage credit from the town? And then you're also requesting a percentage from Prince George's County? Or would you only be coming to the town for a credit?
Yeah. So, go ahead. It would actually be from both Prince George's County and, and the town of Bladensburg. The one from the Prince George's County would be, I think it's targeted around six hundred dollars a unit. And the one that we had just done some quick math on for the, the town itself would be more around a hundred to a hundred and fifty dollars per unit.
So taxes for low-income housing tax credit projects, projects that are, that use the tax credit program are all done on income-based. So all of our taxes are projected and it's based on NOI. So what we were projecting is trying to, what a pilot does is it actually fixes your taxes at a level. Well, you can do it a couple of different ways. One, you could get a reduction in taxes, or you can fix it at like a, at a floor. And then as that floor goes up, your taxes would go up as well. So we just, the county already has their process. They're in the process of, of reviewing our application for a pilot at the county level. So this would be a, a specific town request that we'd be asking for a, I think we said a two-hundred-dollar reduction in taxes per unit.
Thank you for that. And for how many years are you looking for? Sorry if I missed that.
We would try to match the, the counties, and I think theirs is for, is it twenty or forty?
Thirty to forty years, depending.
Forty years. But again, thirty to forty years because we use it.
You said thirty to forty?
Thirty, thirty to forty, yeah.
I thought it was just my ears.
But the, if, so again, there are two different ways you can structure it. One is you start with a, a level and then it, it goes up at a percentage per year. The other way is to do it, which is what we were proposing here, is a reduction. So if our NOI, if our income goes up, your taxes will still continue to go up. It's just reduced by that two-hundred dollars per unit, per year. And we can show you projections on that if you'd like to see those as well.
Yeah, I think for the council's standpoint, and tell me if you all disagree, but just seeing the numbers and then having the opportunity to talk through them with our staff and having Mr. Tenelli work those as well would be definitely needed before we could feel comfortable voting to do something like that.
Yeah, we assume that. You wouldn't make that decision tonight. At least throw it out there because, you know, with all of the, with the interest rates going up, construction costs have gone up. We've been really getting tight with the project. So if we don't need it, we won't ask, but we wanted to at least bring it up as a potential option.
Great. Thank you for at least putting it out there so we know we asked. Any questions?
I just said we were open to the concept of doing it. We have done it in the past. The project that we did it on, they took two units and gave us basically project-based vouchers for those, and they used them for permanent supportive housing.
Because I'm thinking even if we could get five of those, if we're willing to do, you know, a partnership on the taxes. And again, we can't make any guarantees tonight. We really do have to think through the numbers. But I think we would be more comfortable supporting five. Just given the challenges people are having right now with housing issues. So if that's something, and I know you have to talk about it with your leadership team. You can't give us a firm answer tonight, but.
Yeah, I think it comes down to the financials on how it, how it affects the project. So if, if the residents are coming in with a voucher, that's, you know, that doesn't, that doesn't hurt us financially. If they're not coming in with a voucher and we, we need to find ways to support them, that we have to figure out how we're going to do that.
Yeah, and I'm thinking more so, and tell me if, if you're thinking the same thing, because we were approached directly by Prince George's County and the head of Health and Human Services. And so County Executive Also Brooks is pushing him to keep the conversation going with us to provide opportunities to work, to provide clean, safe housing for people, again, who are in transition. So they would be coming through the county, so I don't foresee any issues with them having the vouchers since the recommendations would be coming from Social Services and Health and Human Services.
Usually with those vouchers program. Usually with those voucher programs, it takes ten years or more. So they, I don't know if they can pull, I have never known them to pull from, from the street per se or the unhoused, purchase somebody's on the waiting list, unless it was something domestic or something like that. So I guess we have to really look into that because if it's somebody that.
Yeah. That's a good point, Councilmember Blunt. And I know from the meeting that Councilmember Bryden, I'm mixing names. Councilmember Brown and I had with the county executive, that was a specific population. She was really saying was at her heart for people coming out of domestic abuse situations, out of shelters, needing, because they're already working. The challenge for them is getting an apartment. Not, they're not on the street necessarily, but because they're in the shelter, technically, they still need that next step to transition back into independence and having their own housing. Okay, okay, okay. That's good to know. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Councilmember, you were waiting. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yes, so another thing is we, in that particular Warren Works, we have a lot of apartments that are, are existing. Would you be interested in a small stock of having a home, a homeownership program? Or is that something that you, some mixed use? Is, is that something that you all do or have done before? Because, you know, really, we want our residents, our newer residents, to be homeowners and have, you know, a stake in their community.
So yes, we have done, we haven't completed it because the tax credit program requires a fifteen-year holding period. We have two projects that we're working on now that were coming up actually pretty close to that fifteen-year compliance period, and then it'll get transitioned to homeownership. So we have a whole homeownership plan. They get credit from their rent that goes towards their down payment to help them transition that. Those two projects are fully subdivided. I don't know that we can subdivide this because of the, the way the site lays out, but we can look into how we could condo them out or do something to that effect. But again, it would be a fifteen-year period for it to be, before it becomes homeownership. But you'd be surprised. In this type of, like you said, there's a lot of apartments in this area. When we build the townhouse rentals, our turnover is really low to begin with. When we offer the homeownership option, the turnover goes down even more because people will stay for a long time in order to buy their home, especially if there's equity built in when they get it. So, so we can look into that as well. We can, and it might be worth having a separate work session just to discuss some of these issues in more detail, where we can actually put it up on the screen, show you the numbers, and show you how the, how the economics affect the project.
Yeah, definitely. Because, and thank you, Councilmember Rout, for bringing that up. Because that, we talked about that in our very first meeting when I was expressing the very same sentiment. There's a saturation, a very high saturation of apartments in Ward Two. And I recall you mentioning that same program. But again, if there's some way we could support it to help get the necessary approvals for subdividing that project, we're more than happy to do that. But again, we're trying to help build generational wealth, and particularly in communities of color. As you know, the first step is homeownership. So we can definitely follow up and if needed have, like you said, a separate work session where we can dive into that, talk further about the pilot program and really see the numbers. And, and then also come back to you too with more information from the county in terms of the level of support for the project as it relates to the voucher program. Because I, I don't want to give generalities. I'd rather you walk away with some specifics and we get the same opportunity so we know exactly what we're agreeing to, to do as we move forward.
I agree. And, and if not this site, we love that product, so we'll, we'll be happy to search for other sites in the, in the area. But this one's a little bit difficult just because of the two-of-twos. The single, the traditional town, townhomes are, are huge, and they would be great homeownership opportunities. The two-over-twos are more like condos, so a little bit more difficult, but, but we'll definitely look into it.
Any other questions from the team before we move on?
I just have a question for the council. Isn't it already two-over-twos in the other?
Correct. So it's a continuation, yes. It's a continuation of that same sort of theme. So Hamlet Woods One and Hamlet Woods Two are two-over-twos. However, there's a smaller section in there, and I think it's on the Hamlet Woods Two side, am I right? That it's the individual townhomes, but there are only two levels. But great starter homes if you're a recent graduate buying your first home or, you know, just in the market transitioning from an apartment or even a condo to a townhome. So, yeah, thank you again for coming out tonight. We really appreciate the entire team being here with us. So our task is to circle back so we can schedule a meeting sometime in the next month or so so we can follow up and make sure we're staying in touch and getting each other the appropriate information.
Sounds great.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, and that completes our first appearance for tonight. So we'll move forward with Mr. Alberto Zagata from Pepco. He is the Senior External Affairs Specialist who's coming tonight to talk about the LED streetlight upgrade program. I believe Mr. Zagata is joining us remotely and is connected online. There he is. We can see you. There he is, we can see you. All right, good evening, Mr. Zagata. Did you need to share your screen at all?
I believe so, but it needs to be, I can send you, you know, or send an email. We can attach this later on.
Okay, so feel free to take it away.
Okay, so thank you very much. And I understand that the town of Bladensburg has some questions with regards to the streetlight ownership process. And so we're going to take this opportunity to speak a little bit about, you know, what the proposed tariffs are going to be and how, and basically what these options, you know, might be for the town of Bladensburg. The first thing is that.
The, the, the streetlights that, that we're looking at, we want to make sure that everything is done, you know, for the benefit of the town, okay? At, at, at this, at this moment and for the foreseeable future, you know, Pepco does not make any money off of the, off of the streetlights, off of the streetlight bills. What we're looking at right now, and I think what a lot of municipalities have been asking for is what is a process for conversion to LED? And so that, that's what we're, that's what we're working on right now. And currently there are three tariffs in place, but there's also one process that, that's happening. So to quickly go over the process, what, what we're looking at and what we, what we've seen that other municipalities have done is that they've hired a streetlight consultant. And I guess one of the first, one of the questions that we received back from the town of Bladensburg is why is there a consultant necessary to go through this process? And, and basically why a consultant is necessary is that they will be able to take a look at your, at the streetlights currently in your municipality and, and give you an idea of, you know, what type of streetlights would best be suited for your municipal. You know, do you want them to be, how bright do you want them to be? You know, what color, what type of streetlight, right? So, so all of those things, you know, would be determined by a streetlight consultant. Pepco doesn't make those types of decisions for the municipality. All of those decisions have to be made by the municipality. What, what temperature, you know, should, you know, should the light be? Are they more whitish or more bluish, you know, hues? So it, it's, it's not, it's not just as simple as, you know, I like this style and this is, and this is what I want, right? It, it's a little bit, it's a little bit more, more complicated than that. A streetlight consultant will also look at your, at your, at your jurisdiction within the municipality and identify, you know, dark zones, right? I think some, they call it black holes or areas where, you know, they believe you should have some lighting here because it's too dark, right? That's something that Pepco wouldn't do, but that's something that a, you know, a streetlight consultant would be able to, to give you that information. Also, you know, a, a, a streetlight consultant would be able to assess, you know, how many streetlights you have, you know, in, in your municipality and then compare that to what Pepco has in, in our records, right? And there shouldn't be, you know, any or much of a difference. But we have sometimes seen where it, where, you know, a municipality might be billed less than what, what we have in our records. And then some cases we've seen where a municipality might be, might be billed more than, than the streetlights that they have, you know, within their, their jurisdiction. So if a streetlight consultant, you know, does a, does, you know, does a, a survey of, account of all the streetlights, we're going to take that and then we're going to ensure that you're billed based upon, you know, that, that survey, those survey results. Once that happens, then, then you would meet with our engineers and, and, and our, and our streetlight subject matter expert. They would be, they would begin to tell you what, what the next steps would be. And typically that involves a site visit. So we'll, we'll come out to, to, to the municipality and, and we'll do a walkthrough, right? We'll take a look, you know, at what the poles look like, you know, what are, you know, what are the, you know, what are the conditions of the poles? In some cases, you know, we might see, well, you know, here there's a pole that's too old. So, you know, in this case, we're going to have to remove this pole, you know, and replace it with a newer one. That wouldn't, obviously wouldn't be any charge to the municipality. That, that's a Pepco, that's a Pepco cost, we're just part of our maintenance. After a walkthrough is done, then, you know, then the municipality would have to decide specifically on the type and style of a streetlight that, that you want. In some cases, we've seen that the residents' homes are very close to the streetlights. So a very powerful streetlight is not really what the residents want because they would be, you know, shining too much light into their home, especially at night. However, there are other municipalities where we've seen where the street, where the streetlights are far enough away from the home and, you know, and the actual residents prefer a, a strong, bright streetlight that, that, that illuminates as much as possible. So, so those are, those are, those are the determinations that need to be done. And when those are done, then, then you would, you would place an order and that's done via a new business application. That process is done online and our engineers would, would assist you. Basically, it would walk you through that process. Then, 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 and then also at that time, you know, we will be looking at, you know, cost, right? How much is it going to cost? And so, you know, this is always, you know, a question that we receive from municipalities, but it's, it's very, it's very difficult to answer because, because there are a lot of variables at play, right? Do you want the, the standard type of streetlight? Do you want a streetlight that's, that's a specialty light? For example, like a teardrop style? All of those affect the pricing. And then also, you know, do you want to install a streetlight in a place where there wasn't one before? You know, that's also, you know, a different, a different charging. So, so, so all of those things have to be taken into consideration. But before obviously you submit the new business application, we would come to you with a global, a, a global budgetary amount so that, you know, the municipality would know in terms of an estimate of what, what the, what the, what the project would cost. Then depending on, on how many streetlights there are, then, you know, those can be done in phases, right? We would look to obviously illuminate the, the, the most, the, the most biggest ones. Like if there's like a main street, then we would typically do those first and then do, do the other, other adjoining streets. And so those are, that's roughly what the process is. And, and that's, that's, that's where we sit today, okay? Now, we've seen other municipalities at this point using ARPA funding, the American Rescue, American Relief Plan, Rescue Plan Act, and, and using that funding to, to pay, to fund for some of this, some of these costs. So that's, that's an option as well. Now, all of this is happening while, while we're, while we're, while we're working on putting through a tariff. And there are actually three tariffs that we're looking at right now that we're going to be submitting to the Maryland Public Service Commission. I, I believe we were trying to submit these, you know, by the end of the month. And, you know, and we're trying to collect as much input as possible from different municipalities. And, and basically the, the first type is called a, it's called a C I A C offering. And a C I A C is C I A C, and that's Contribution in Aid of Construction. But what basically that means is that the municipality would, would, would pay for, would pay for the, the cost upfront. And then Pepco would do the work and, and, and do the upgrades and do the changes of the, the streetlights to LEDs, okay? Typically, you know, I don't see that as being, you know, one of the, one of the more popular options because, you know, it, it forces the municipality to make a large upfront payment first. The second option is a non-CIAC, right? So this is the option where we're basically instead of making a large, you know, payment upfront, the, the, that, that amount, that charge is baked into your bill going forward, right? So, so basically it's, it's almost like it's being financed, right? Obviously, your, the bill would be a little bit higher than what it would be if you did, you know, the payment upfront. So, so that's, that's the difference between the C IAC and the non-CIAC option of the tariffs. The third option is, is, is customer-owned. So this is where the municipality comes and says, Pepco, you know, thank you very much, but, you know, we, we want to actually own our own streetlights, right? And so that, that's, that's also an option that, that municipalities have. And then, you know, if, if you go through that option, then there's, there's a, there's a few more agreements that have to be made because the poles would, would continue to belong to Pepco. It's just the streetlights would, would belong to the municipality. And with that ownership, you know, there, there comes, you know, some, some liability and some responsibility as well because there are other, there are other, other companies that own parts of, of the pole. So for example, you know, the, the, the telephone companies, you know, the internet companies, you know, they use our poles, you know, for their wires as well, right? So, so, so there has to be an additional agreement, a license agreement, a service level agreement that, that has to be done on, if that's the, if that's the option that the municipality wants to go through. So it, so very generally, those are the three tariff options that we're proposing to the Public Service Commission. And, and what I can do is, you know, if we come back, you know, or if you invite me back for, you know, for, you know, another session, or this can be done, you know, offline, you know, I can have subject matter experts, you know, join us, you know, and provide a, a map of all of your streetlights with an actual count, whether they're overhead, underground, and, and, you know, and give you like more information in terms of how you're being built currently and, and an idea of, of, of what the cost would be. Do, do, does anyone have any questions?
Thank you for the overview. We do have a question from Councilmember Routh.
Thank you, Mayor James. So I understand the tariff process, but that is in the future. Like you stated that you're going to be within the next month petitioning a Public Services Commission. I think my colleagues wanted to really understand currently, how does a municipality upgrade their streetlight presently? My colleagues were saying that, you know, there are LED lights that have been upgraded in our community where there was a light that wasn't so bright. It was, and it was called in and it was replaced. As, and so how can, without going into like cost and things in this whole process, if we have identified places in town, why can't we just ask for these sets to just be upgraded and transitioned to LEDs?
Thank you, Councilmember. That, that is a great question. And what precludes us from, from doing that is the current tariff. The, the current tariff actually, actually has us, when we make a change, to, to change it with, with, with the same type of bulb. Unless, you know, we, we don't have that bulb in, in stock at the moment and then we'll replace it with an LED. So, so, but that, that's, those are one-off bases. You know, when we have a municipality that wants to go in and carpet change, you know, or upgrade all of their, all of their streetlights, then that, that's when we go through the new business application. And currently, a municipality would have to get a streetlight consultant to assist them with determining what type of LED streetlight you would like to have. And then that would be part of that new business application that, that would be submitted to Pepco.
Does that answer the question that? I mean, the answer is the answer, it's not what we wanted to hear, but we do appreciate you giving us that response, Mr. Zagata. Councilmember Blunt, did you have a question?
I have some question.
Oh, I'll come to Councilmember Brown and then.
Thank you for that, thanks, Mayor. Question, what does Pepco do for the unincorporated areas who need bulb replacements? And are there any municipalities who currently own their own lights? And the, 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 I think I, maybe I heard you say about the maintenance though. So if a bulb is, needs to be replaced, is replaced with that same type bulb? And, and not with a LED light? So those, yes, those are the, the questions that I have, thank you.
Thank, thank, thank you, Councilmember. Yes, so, 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 yeah, so right now, you know, if, you know, the, I'm trying to think of a municipality that owns. I, I'm not aware of one that owns all of their, their streetlights, but we do have some municipalities that own, for example, all of their underground, right? And, but once a municipality, let's say the town of Bladensburg decides to own their, their own streetlights, then you also have the option of having Pepco maintain them or you can have, you know, a, a separate company come in and maintain those streetlights for you. And, and so that, that's, that's part of the process of municipal-owned streetlights. Is that if you do own them, then, you know, you have to, you have to, you know, make the decision of allowing Pepco to continue to maintain them or, or going through another, another company. But that's, that's, that's a choice that, that the municipality would have to make. And with regards to the, the, the change of the, of the, of the bulbs, as I mentioned before, you know, if, if we don't have that particular bulb in stock, then, then, you know, we will, we will upgrade it to an LED. But like I mentioned, that, that's, that's done really on a one-off basis. And, and to be honest, you know, we, we have, we have run into some, you know, supply chain issues. It, it's, it's happened globally, you know, with global supply chain issues. And so where, you know, this, it, it just works in the favor of the municipality because we, we can't have, you know, municipality without, you know, without streetlights. So, you know, we will go and we'll change it to an LED if we don't have that same type of bulb going forward. Now, once the, you know, once the, once the tariffs are approved, if, if I'm not mistaken, you know, we're, we're going to, we're not going to house, you know, those old bulbs anymore. And so we're going to go through a process of, of upgrading, upgrading those, those streetlights to LEDs.
Councilmember Brown, you had a follow-up?
Well, yes, a couple, couple. What, what's comparable to the, to, to what, what's currently there to the LED? What's comparable to that? But then I did ask, and I don't, and we're running, trying to, we're running past our time a little bit. So, and then I did ask what does the Pepco do for the county? And to replace their bulbs, I guess you answered with the, with the one-offs. And we're really trying to look for a, look at a solution that's not going to cost the town because this right here seems like, what I'm hearing just seems like something that's going to be very costly. Does Pepco have some types of grants or some types of funding for the municipalities? And because we really don't want to own our, own, own the, the, the streetlights.
Understood. We, we can definitely, you know, point you to what other municipalities have done because most of municipalities, you know, are, are in your, are in the same shoes as, as you are, right? That, you know, I, I've, in some cases we've seen, you know, where, you know, to have these things, you know, upgraded to LEDs and they, they, they go for over a thousand dollars per, per streetlight. And that's prohibitively expensive for some municipalities. However, you know, we have worked, like, for example, we're currently working with, with the town of Capitol Heights. We're assisting them. We're assisting them. We, we, we provided them information for the, for some ARPA funding. So the, you know, these are fundings where, where the municipality can, can ask the federal government for, for funding. And then you can use that funding and apply it towards, you know, towards the, the cost of, of the replacement. I'll, I'll be happy to, to forward that information to, to you as well.
We definitely appreciate you fielding all of our questions and definitely, I think we're better informed to understand what this process will entail. And while I know you can't give us specifics in terms of a total project cost, this still was enlightening to help us understand a better picture of what we need to be thinking about in terms of the funding. So please let us just have a chance to talk amongst ourselves to figure out if we are prepared to move forward with the meeting that you offered up with your subject matter experts to provide a little bit more information. I think just following up on the presentation from Councilmember Rout with your information, walking us through everything, it definitely was enlightening and gives us, again, a better scope of what the project would entail. But at this time, I think we have enough information to move forward. But really appreciate you joining us tonight, especially after business hours. And don't want to keep you because I realize you probably have several community meetings tonight.
I, I, I appreciate it, you know, I, I would definitely recommend, you know, a follow-up meeting, you know, with us. It, it's, it's, even if it's just for, for, you know, for informational and educational purposes. At, at some point, you know, once the Public Service Commission, you know, makes a determination, I, I kind of have a feeling there's going to be a rush, you know, to, to get these, to get these done. And so, you know, I, I would love for the Town of Bladensburg to be, you know, at the, at the head of the line, right? And be able to, you know, take advantage of, of the program, you know, once, once it's enacted. And I appreciate, you know, the invitation this evening. And thank you very much for, for having me. And I'm looking forward to working with you and partnering with you as well.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Zagata. Have a good rest of your evening, and we'll definitely circle back to follow-up. At this time, we've completed our appearances for tonight's meeting, and we don't have any items under Old Business. It's 6:27, and I do want to give everyone just a brief moment to break between the council meeting and the work session. So I'll try to move us a little quicker with the next items. So with the unhoused population proposal that I had shared with the council last week and the directors when we talked through the budget. I just wanted to circle back to confirm there was some feedback from the council in terms of thinking about things like staging in the industrial area rather than behind a shopping center, even though that may be where folks gather. Or rather than partnering with the church as they do in Hyattsville as a distribution site. So that, all that feedback is taken into account. And just wanted to, again, have the opportunity to mention it briefly to the community tonight and ask for a vote at the council meeting to approve the program. I just want to state, it's a start. It may not be perfect getting out of the gate, but we're just trying to make every effort to gather resources because these are our folks. These are our residents, whether they're in, you know, outdoors in summer months, in the cold. We just really need to do something to help, if we can, get them resources in addition to meeting their, their nutritional needs, their sanitation needs. And oftentimes, we just see them in passing. I know the officers under Chief Collington's leadership do a wonderful job reaching out to them. I've seen them purchase food when they've seen someone eating out of the garbage can for, for instance. And these are human beings that don't deserve to be left behind. And so this proposal is just a start. I'm not looking for this to be the final end-all, be-all, and just welcome the input of our entire team in helping to really get this off the ground in the coming fiscal year. So with that, just want to pause for any questions or concerns with the proposal. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Thank you so much, Mayor James and Councilmember Brown. I did get a few calls from a few residents that didn't understand the program. And so I definitely did my best to adequately shape and communicate the program as it was presented. But they just, they had a few questions, like what has the town done as it relates to supporting the unhoused and the population? Like what have we done that there's not a, a hit to our tax base and our budget? And so I know we do have the CAT team that connects them. But, you know, this is, this is another reason why I think that we should grow our staff. Because this is, this issue and managing the site is not going to, it's, the work is going to fall on someone. And so with this program, we need a person to manage it. And I do think that it's worth, you know, I know we can't do anything at this budget session and season. But we really need an FTE for a person to manage the needs. Because there are county programs that was pointed by residents that I didn't know about, that really help the homeless who are unhoused presently. And so we can fall in the county for their vouchers, their resources. Because some of the residents' concerns, as they told me, is that we're just going to give them showers and a job. Like what more are we going to do? And so I talked about the barber program. I talked about connecting them to resources through the CAT unit. And so I think I did a good job with, but I did want to represent their perspective. Because at the bottom line, you know, they were saying that this is affecting, these individuals don't pay taxes to the town. But I told them about improving the blight, improving, you know, what it looks like. We don't want people driving through our communities seeing these populations, so we need to start somewhere. So I just wanted to, you know, maybe next, you know, budget season, we can work on really looking at a social services person, maybe quarter time, halftime, something time. So that we can be able to really, truly support this program. Because I do think it's going to be a success, especially the picking up some of the litter, paying them on a weekly basis. I love that.
Thank you so much for representing those viewpoints of the residents that you spoke to. And definitely, again, just point back to, it's a pilot. And that's the beauty of pilots, that you can amend them, adjust them, expand them as you see fit. And so it's just a starting point to say, we're not just relying on, not that it isn't a good thing, but our annual Thanksgiving luncheon. But we recognize these people are in our community, and we have to start somewhere. And I think that, again, just by having a start where we're engaging with them, they see that we care. We actually can find out who these individuals are. Right now, unless you talk to them one-on-one, you don't even know the, the names. You just know that's the guy who's over by Peace Cross. You don't know that's Mr. so-and-so. And as we start building the trust that comes with communicating, feeding them. I'm not trying to get spiritual, but if sometimes you meet someone's physical need, they will open up to hear the advice that you have to share with them and be more receptive to resources. But it's very difficult for me to say, I'm going to listen to you offering me resources when my belly is growling louder than your voice as you're talking to me. So it, again, it's just a start. All those reasons are valid that you've, pardon me, heard. And it's a huge opportunity for us to go back to that social services person in the CAT unit as we used to have years and years ago. I think where we are with society, COVID has showed us, we have to step up our game in terms of social service needs for our community. This is a step in that direction. Councilmember Brown?
Uh, thank you, Council, Councilmember Rout and Mayor. Yeah, again, I think it's a, I mean, I think it's definitely a good pilot program. Like you said, that's the reason for, that we, reason why it's a pilot program. But also making sure that we are taking advantage of the resources that are, that are here already within the, within the county. Because sometimes we kind of sort of reinvent the wheel. So without reinventing, how do we, how do we tap into those resources that are already there and supporting them? And, and assisting and, and helping, you know, with moving that needle. Also, we do have the Salvation Army, and we do have churches. So, so as you mentioned as well. But because the Salvation Army, I mean, that's, that's a program, and it's, and it's what they do. And they're right here in our, in our backyard, backyard, so to speak, right there on Kinnamore Avenue. So, so, yeah, so those are the main things that I want to point out. Connecting with the county, pointing them to some, some of the current, you know, services and that are already available. Helping them, because sometimes they don't even know that those services are available at the county level. And, and doing our part as well, but so.
Yep. Our great input, and that is listed under Bullet Number Five, inviting in our state and not just the county, but state and county resources. And the beauty for us is we've already been engaged with Health and Human Services because of the potential for that homeless shelter project. So we're already on their radar. So when we pick up the phone to call for those resources, we're high up on their list. Because they know, when they came to meet with us as we had those discussions, we're not throwing that population away. We didn't necessarily want to shelter it in the community, but we also were clear, we know that we have an unhoused population. We're not trying to accommodate that county, but we do want to take care of Bladensburg. And so I do believe that we'll get those county resources that you all talked about. Yes.
Again, you know, a pilot program is good, but it's, it's so much deeper than that. I would suggest that if you're going to use the CAT team or any team, you meet with these people first from social services, from the mental health standpoint. Because they unhoused a lot of times for, not because they can't find something, because they want to be. Calling and meeting with these people, because putting it to the CAT team, that's deep. They're not, they cannot, they can't handle that. I mean, if you're going to feed them, clothe them, yeah, they can. It's deeper than that. It's really deeper than that. And I think calling these people to a meeting to find out what they can offer to, once you get the, you identify the unhoused. You send them to this meeting to meet with these people in a, in a step program. Because if you don't, what you're doing is just, it's going to be taken from granted from the unhoused. I'm just being.
Yeah, I agree.
Being real, so if you have a meeting with all these resources on the state level, mental level, this, and what, come here to meet, give lunch, and talk about what they can do.
Yep.
So because, then we have someone to put that to the CAT team. They're not equipped for that.
Understood. And so, again, this is just the overview of the program, but not a project timeline. But you're absolutely right. The next step is really meeting with all the partners. Because I don't want to initiate it, and we haven't been clear on who's handling what in terms of the outreach and the frequency even. Because we have to be on their schedule. So there's a lot more to it. This is just an overview. But again, it's a start, just to do, start something and not look up a year from now. And now it's double the number of people in our community. We don't want that, so. But I definitely agree with the feedback received. And believe, Mr. Charnovich, is it on the next agenda or? Don't see it on there. Okay, so we may have to amend the agenda to include this because it does have a budget impact. Yeah, I don't see it. Correct. Or actually, let me ask the question where I can hold on, because we are coming up on the budget discussion. We talked about it last week. Mr. Tenelli, did you add anything in there for this program? For the community? Okay, but specifically? Right, but I was speaking more specifically for the unhoused population proposal. That's okay. We were talking about it. It's, I know, you're like, come on, time is short. Yeah, I know. I'm trying. 6:38.
For unhoused population?
Yes. Or public safety, since we would be leaning toward, let me ask Chief. Chief? Or would you rather?
I would rather pour from Arpa because it's strictly a community service.
Okay. And we have. Yeah, and exactly. Because we could be in a situation next week, next year, where we don't have to put anything in because of the state and county resources, so.
Maybe, but it's always, you know.
Possibly. Okay, got it. Thank you. Yes. So we have had this on the agenda since April. It's been tabled twice. Just wanted to circle back to this because we did discuss the council's desire to move forward with annexation. We're trying to grow our tax base, and part of growing that, the tax base is growing the town. And so we agreed that we would like to have an annexation specialist or at least a line item there so we can have a consultant there. But it would also have to include a land use attorney. Because having those conversations and getting their input early on before you start going too far down a path is very important. So we're not targeting an area that is not going to be profitable, and that land use attorney will have some specific expertise to help us. And so that item is a financial matter. It is not currently on the 7:00 PM agenda. So that would be a need there to amend it, to include an annexation consultant. I saw the money is in there in the line item for the consultant, but it's just, we haven't voted to go to an RFP to, to engage an annexation consultant. And by the same token, I noticed the money is in the budget. I'm not sure if you all noticed, for the redevelopment consultant for the next budget year. But we also need to vote to go to RFP for that as well if we're going to continue with that service. So try to make that quick so Mr. Tenelli can take us through the budget discussion, final thoughts. I apologize because it's less than 25 minutes left, but we'll turn it over to you at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. And for those following along in time, the budget is on the website under the Government tab, under Meetings and Agenda. I think it starts at page 41 under the Council Packet. For those that want to follow along, but Mayor, Council, you have a printed copy in front of you. And I also sent you a one-page thing, looks like this, you can hold it up. The budget changes since the, that we talked about on the June 5th work session that is included in this draft. And I could just, I can run down these, or we can just see them in the budget. The Town Administrator, we increased the salary plus associated benefits based on the current search process. The, there's a proposal to increase the administrative staff and the non-law enforcement officer staff. An increase of 10% to try to catch up with the, the increases to public safety and public works last year. Because they were bumped up to what I call a marketable salary, I guess is the best way to say it. And with this, some of this came from the, the administrative increase came from the ARPA funding and the non-law enforcement officers, what we call non-LEOs, which is code enforcement, communications to administrative positions. And, yeah, so that was proposed to come from the speed camera funds, just that portion. But the rest of it is coming from within our own budget. So what really changed between the May 24th and the June 5th, or I'm sorry, the, the June 8th draft here is the transfer from fund balance increased from 405,000 to 494,000. But we also increased the ARPA funding to offset a little bit of the salary increases. So pushed our total budget just over $11 million compared to 8 million when we started out in FY '23. We, we, we're ending up with 10, just over 10 million right now with the budget changes. And the FY '24 budget is just over $11 million. So the transfer from fund balance is 4% of the total budget this year, of, on FY '24. This year, it started out as 8%, then went down to 6% with the budget changes. And FY '24 is down to 4% of the, of the total budget. Just a little background there. Because all the numbers fall into that transfer from fund balance if that's going to be needed. Now, we budget that every year. We budget that every year since I've been here. And I don't believe we've used it at all since I've been here. But it's a balancing act. It is something used to balance the shortfall of revenues needed to cover all the anticipated expenditures. And we can see, flip through some of the pages here. I added a new column under the Finance and Town Clerk and Public Safety Pages to show you what is being funded from ARPA. To show you what is being funded from ARPA and how it flows into ARPA. So and that's what those increases that we were talking about. I want to show you where that was coming from. And also where it was coming from, from traffic enforcement. And I want to flip to the ARPA page, because I want, I do want to talk about that. That is page eleven of the packet. You see the page number down at the very bottom. Everybody see it?
Yes.
Thumbs up, okay, good, okay. Um so the salary line item with compensation is six hundred and forty-two thousand. And we can see um. The three large ticket items or the three large expenditure items. You see there's the community assistance, which is the placeholder for rental mortgage and utility assistance. Five hundred thousand for unutilized funds from FY twenty-three transferred to next budget year. And we also have the um flood barrier project there at the bottom. And there's a little four-line summary there of where we are with the ARPA funds right now. Tying into the budget for FY twenty-four. So at the end of FY twenty-four, we will have planned to use four point seven million dollars of the total four point nine million award. Which would leave two hundred thousand dollar balance unencumbered. Yes?
Yes, um thank you, Mrs. Tenelli. So given the presentation that we just had from Pepco.
Mm-hmm.
Um I would like to request um a traffic light consultant to really help us understand and really. The the lack of light in our community is an issue. And it's in response, in my opinion, from COVID. There's been an increased crime since COVID. And so this problem is probably not going to go away. And understanding Chief Aziz at some of the community meetings, he said this is only the beginning of our increased crime. So we do, we can't ignore the the low light areas in our community. So I would like to request a consultant at the tune of fifty thousand placed in the ARPA. In addition to the contractual services that you already have. For a consultant so that we can understand what we can do to increase our lighting. Whether it's taking the lesser road as it relates to what's free or possibly available to us still. I was on the tariff call. Pepco seems to think that this is gonna pass, but there's a lot of municipalities and including our attorney. Who may have some different issues. And so that tariff process, I don't think it's gonna be quick. So we may want to get a consultant to ready our, so we can ready ourselves before this big rush is gonna come to Pepco. Just to let us know what we are working with. I would rather invest in a consultant so we can know what we need, rather than to just kind of do this on our own. And then we're not still not happy and we're still behind. So I I hope that my my colleagues would support this investment in uh understanding our streetlight issue.
Thank you, councilmember, for that uh perspective. I I know personally, I'm looking at it in terms of, we already have the community legacy money for the additional streetlights. And that project needs to get off the ground and done. So I'm just concerned with jumping out, taking on more before we get that project done and the funding for that. I'm not sure how much longer we can hold off, but that that state money that we have to spend and it's specifically for a street light. In an area where it's an easy egress for people who come into the community to commit crime. So I think just my stance and I submit to whatever the will of the council is, is to really focus on getting that project done. And spending those state dollars. And also figuring out how we can go after more of that grant money to increase lighting throughout the community. Because that was done without securing a consultant. Our engineer was able to work with Public Works and go through the community and assess this is a target area without us having to spend money on a consultant. So if we can get more of that grant money, I'd rather put our efforts toward that. Because from that presentation tonight, I didn't get convinced that Pepco is gonna be able to help us with funding. So I feel like we, our best resource is going after money for funding for lights ourselves.
Yeah, I spoke with our colleagues over in Capitol Heights who have secured grant funding. Um and maybe that's one of the problems why the street light hasn't been been completed and it's been so long, because we don't have someone working. That can be a scope of work that's added onto their, the consultant's work since it's not off the.
Since it's not off the ground and it's not functioning now, maybe that's the reason why. It's been more than two years and that project has still, I mean, yes, COVID has something to do with it. But our staff, we just don't have the capacity to push, to make sure that all the checkboxes are done. And there is, I did speak with colleagues in Capitol Heights, there are monies out there through the federal government. And with two consultants working, the grant writer and them, they they should be able to bring us back things. But we have to be able to make an investment um to get these projects, we have to finish them, so.
Thank you for that additional input. Again, you know, my perspective still stands because COVID happened. We were moving on that project and then all the impacts impacts of it just really sidelined us in numerous ways. But again, councilmembers, if there's agreement, councilmember Blunt?
Um question, you said, I'm sorry. If your engineers was able to do it with, I mean, with staff and get it done in a timely manner. And we could still look for grant money prior, can we, can we do both? You could use your, the staff or who you used before to to do what was done while we actually looking for grant money. Then I will say we can hold on it until we find the partners, I think from municipalities, who they used and see. If it's still available while using the engineer that you have on staff who used it before.
Thank you for that, councilmember Blunt. And that's pretty much how we got the funding before. We had an administrator at the time and the clerk was the one doing the research to get the grants and giving where we are with an administrator. We'll get back to that point where we have a clerk who can focus on the clerk's duties, including going out and trying to help us identify those pots of money. That's how we were able, Ms. McCauley um was our clerk at the time, doing the research to help pulling that money. So that's all I'm saying is, we're getting where we need to be to your point of staffing up. And so I just feel like we can move on that.
But this like, nothing is gonna be pushed back for another year.
Right.
Um once we get the um town administrator and and then the clerk can start working on that. I mean, with that, not putting it off for another year, another two years. But know that we, it is a need. And while we do have ARPA funds and ARPA money can be spent for that. And while we looking for a grant person to write, to look for grant for that, then you know, as long as it's not pushed back year, 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 and it gets done.
I agree with you a hundred percent. Thank you, councilmember Blunt. Councilmember McBride?
Right now, I think I I agree. If we, as long as it doesn't get pushed back, um we have time to to get it done and get, you know, the grant person in. So we can get it off the ground, get it moving, yeah, I'm for it.
Thank you, councilmember Brown.
Um from a budgetary perspective, Mr. Vito. So if we do something as a placeholder, so say for instance, if if we, if we um kind of use some of our internal resources. Now, and we come back and say, okay, well, we want to move forward with the with the consultant specifically for the for the lighting. Do we amend the budget, do we amend, or can we amend the budget? Or do we right now just say, okay, maybe we'll put a placeholder and and then.
We can definitely do a budget amendment, and we've done it before. When we found, okay, this is an area, it's not going the way we want, we need to transition. So we have that flexibility to come back. If it's two months and the council says we don't see what we need to see happening, we can absolutely have that authority and exercise it. So it even if we're not doing it tonight, absolutely.
Like we can put it in there tonight and not use it, there are things that we budgeted for that we didn't do.
Right.
Or we can come back later.
Exactly.
But I think it would be easier for the town administrator that's coming, if there's something that there that she needs, she should be able, the candidate, sorry, should be able to. To exercise her, you know, and move on a a RFP if needed. So if this is identified.
If this is identified as a need, why not put it in there? Because this, so so we're saying that there's an issue, but is it, do we put it in the budget later or do we do it now? We're here now, like we, I mean, this doesn't preclude us for having it there. We're not taking a vote on the RFP tonight to get that moving. We can put it there as a placeholder.
Thank you for that. So um, Mr. Tenelli, sorry.
Quick comment, just try to stay on time. The, we have a couple of options with it. At the end of this year, we'll have at least seven hundred thousand dollars of highway user funds that are under u- utilized, okay? So we budget every year for one fifty in case we need some major road repairs. They haven't happened, so we've been banking those highway user funds because we can um defer them for ten years. So there's money there and there's also money in the current budget for highway u- user projects of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Historically, you haven't used over a hundred each year.
So to that point, and we have to wrap. We could pull it, just to be clear, so without adding anything to the budget tonight. We could use HURs to fund a consultant if the council agrees. That's the direction we want to go in to help us with the streetlight improvement plan for the town.
Yes.
Okay, that's the answer we needed.
An additional seven from what we already have currently?
No, it's already.
We already have the money, but we, it's not.
It's on our balance sheet. It's been building up over like six, seven years. But the highway user funds is a line item on the Public Works budget um down at the bottom for capital outlay. So that could be used for that, um because that is, you know, it's a street project. And it's for streets, it's for safety.
Right.
And it's for highway user projects can be used for streets, sidewalks, safety. So that would definitely fit the bill for that.
Right, but we have plans for road projects that Public Works has mapped out.
Correct.
Those, so that's not gonna help us in our present situation. Because there are streets that are in line, there's to the tune of seven streets that are in line, that need to get repaired. So that's really not gonna help us in this situation, which if this is a one-time cost, we can pull it from ARPA. Because we're not gonna need the streetlight road, we're not gonna need the streetlight again and again and again. Hopefully, the consultant will come in, take a look, work with us, work with our town attorney, work with, and we could talk to some of the other municipalities there in Prince George County. That have a consultant that's doing this work for them, helping them look for grant money and bringing money back to their community.
Thank you, councilmember Brown. So I think at this point, we don't have a consensus to add it at this time. But I do appreciate all the discussion and it's not to say we can't pivot and make that adjustment. We have come to the end of tonight's uh work session agenda, so I do want to just break so everyone has just a couple of minutes between meetings. So with that, I'll call for a motion to adjourn. So moved by councilmember Brown, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by councilmember Blunt. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of aye. Uh any ayes, the ayes have it, we're adjourned.